I would like to welcome everyone here today and our viewing audience to the November 12th, 2020, meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustments. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Angela Lebock, Chairman of the ZBA Board Members. Board members present today are Tom Quinn, Dan Darlin, Lynn Cochran, and myself. Angela Lebock. Staff President Scott Copes, the Attorney Mallory Hoyt, and Laura Berkeley. The Zoning Board of Adjustments is a five-member judiciary board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council to serve without compensation for a term, for a five-year term. The board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardships from strict applications of current zoning laws. We also grant special use and rule of administrative appeals. Any corrections to the meeting from our last, sorry, any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? Motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve. This is Tom Quinn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passed. New business. Are we doing, which one are we doing? Which one are we going to do first? Triton or?
Yeah, the one.
Okay.
First one on the agenda.
Okay, the description here. Our request HV20-05 of Jeff Hoyer on behalf of Triton Services for hardship variance at 2324 Hickory Grove Road to construct a 6,864 square foot, 66 by 104 feet, non-conforming plumber's storage building on a R-4C residential property. The request is for expansion enlargement of a non-conforming use structure, waiving of the R-4C foundation and neighborhood scale requirements and exceeding the size requirements for a garage structure. Section 17.15.020.B, non-conforming use prohibits a use from expansion, extension, enlargement, or an increase in intensity. Section 17.09.03.0K requires the scale and foundation of buildings match the neighborhood. Okay, staff report?
Scott Copes, Department of Neighborhood Services. I'll take my mask off so people can hear a little bit. This request is before us again because this is a non-conforming property. It's zoned residential and there's an existing non-conforming use on the site. The applicant wishes to build a new structure. So that's what we're here for, but I do want to just let everybody know that they're not asking for their second hardship request, which was for the fence. There's no fence that's being proposed to be put up at this time. And so the hardship variance today would just relates to that new 62 by 104 building or approximately 60 by 100 building, square foot building. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, that's my apologies. It's actually the other. Yep, that's my fault. All the desktop. I see that. I'm waiting still. All right, apologies for the delay. We have now opening up the correct PowerPoint. So as I was saying, they're proposing a new structure. It's non-conforming. The existing building that's there now has both office space and it has storage space. And there's a table that's in the staff report that goes, it shows you how much space there is for each. The existing main office building has a storage of 4,048 square feet. There's some smaller buildings that are going to be demolished and those buildings. Let me, let me just take a step back. I think I read the wrong, the wrong line here. So the main office building right now, I guess it does say 4,080 square feet. Okay, so the current demolition is approximately the same size. So 4,048 square feet are being demolished. The existing office building, which does have storage spaces, were 4,080 square feet. So they're taking down 4,000 square feet and they want to replace that with a building that's 6,864 square feet. But I did want to let you know that there is also storage in that main office building of approximately 4,000 square feet. This property's had variances over time. They've added a property to the, to the north. The, the site has been there since the 30s, so it's not a new site, but it has expanded in the past and now they're asking to expand it again. The, the designs for the plan are on the next slide, I believe. Okay, oh yeah, so the presentation goes through. This is the existing site and you can see there, there's a tieback board where they're in process of siding the building. Next slide. This is a little more from the north. It shows the building that's coming down, the rust building on the right side is coming down. And this is that further down the street, that's the building that's coming down. That's the north driveway into the property. Here's a shot during the summer before the trees were taken down. If you go to the next slide, these are a bunch of trees that were in the front yard that have been taken down. And the next slide over shows the trees that were on the north property line that were taken down. And, and so that's an overhead shot of what the trees used to be like there on the north property line. That was required to be in there by hardship variance. It was removed. Next slide, please. So this again kind of just goes through the summary of the buildings that are coming down, which are the three in blue, not the main big one in blue, but the other three in blue. And the red dashed line is the, is the new building. So that's, that's what this slide is. It shows you the general area of where things are going. Next slide, please. This is their new submittal for site plan. Again, on this one, it's, the outline is in red as well where the new building is going. On this site plan, they've included their plantings that they're putting in the front yard. So that's replacing some of the plantings that were taken down. This is the design of the building here. It's going to have seven doors on each side. Or is it six doors on each, six doors, I guess, on each side? Yeah, the, the existing main office building has seven doors right now, but this building will have six on each side. They did improve the design on this compared to their original submittal. The cupolas that have been added, there's additional color board on the bottom. But there are two design elements they were not going to be able to meet. So residential neighborhoods require that the scale of a building meet the scale that's compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. So the scale of this building isn't going to meet that. And so that's one thing that they need a hardship variance for in addition to expanding a non-conforming use. The second design request that they're asking for is the R-4C code requires that you have a foundation similar to what other foundations are. And since this building is going to be slab lawn grade, there's, there won't be a visible foundation like if it was a house or something like that. So those are the two design requests that they're asking for in addition to that main hardship variance request of having a hardship to expand a non-conforming use. Next slide, please. So this is our notice area. We have had, we noticed, we've sent, noticed all adjacent property owners with the 200 feet. And the next slide here shows the, the people that are protesting this. They are, there's six different properties there. We've gotten letters from, I believe, four of these properties. They were included with your packet. We also received a second one just today, and that's before you there, or the other day it was sent out. So those are the people that are complaining. One thing to note is some of them are, are concerned about the fence, which is not happening. So anything that's relates to the fence is, is not, that's not going to be a concern since they're not putting the fence up. This is the, the kind of, it's like a petition for lack of a better word that went out. And again, some of the language in here talks about a fence. So when they went out with this, they were not aware that the fence had been withdrawn. I mean, we sent them notice, all the property owners notice, but it, it mentioned the, the case for the hardship variance for the building, but it didn't say anything about the fence. So that's, so that's kind of why they, they didn't understand the fence wasn't there. We probably should have sent an overt note saying the other request has been removed. That's why you don't have a notice for this fence. That probably would have been more, more, more clarity for people. Next slide, please. So our findings have not changed since our original staff report when we heard this quite a while ago. For hardship variance, there's a number of things that need to be met. And the, the first criteria that we look at is, is, is the code causing some sort of hardship that, that shouldn't be written into the code? And that's not the case. I mean, every community out there with a zoning, zoning ordinance has code requirements for non-conforming uses and how to handle them. So that's not something that's out of the norm. It's not a hardship. The second item that we look at is the physical topographical area of the property. This is a flat area. It's not limited by the topography. There's not a creek that runs through the property that limits where they can put a building. You know, there's not slopes that limit where they can put a building. It's, it's, it's all buildable except for maybe right at the edge of the property where it goes to the railroad. But there's a, a significant size of area that's developed and can be developed. So that is something that has not been met. Unique circumstances, staff's opinion has not been met. Just because you desire more storage space doesn't necessarily mean you have a unique circumstance. Staff would have been probably a little more, if the proposal was for even taking down of 4,000 square feet and adding more 4,000 square feet, it would be a little less onerous on the neighborhood. Item number four, protection of essential character. In staff's opinion, it, it, it doesn't protect the character of the neighborhood. You're adding, you know, 70% more storage, accessory storage than there was accessory storage. Now there, granted, the, the main office building does have some storage, so it's not 70%, 70% of all the storage on site, but it's the 70% of more accessory detached storage. So staff has recommended denial for this request. Are there any questions by the board of staff?
Just to clarify, that's with, with, or in this case, it's without the fence. That, that has no bearing in your decision, your recommendation?
Correct. The fence in the previous time through, it was a dash zero six. This is just dash zero five, which does not include anything regarding the fence.
Scott, does the, the foundation of the proposed building, I look back, it's a Morton building, so it's like a post-framed building, you know, without a front step foundation. Is that part of this? Is that part of this? Like, it doesn't meet the design standards that the city has set forth or is that like just a side?
No, so that's the main building that they're proposing? The one with the three cupolas? Yeah, so that, that building does not have a foundation and that's why there's a hardship variance for the foundation. There's also a hardship variance for the size of the building that's not compatible with the neighborhood. So there's three issues of the, the variance that, that we could, you know, we could vote on them separately if, if the board feels they want to do that, or we could vote on just the whole case. Depends on how the board feels about proceeding, but they could be taken individually if, if, if one of the design elements, for example, is a hangup and, but you did want to approve the actual building, you know, so we could vote on them separately if you need be. There's also, the petitioner is asking for additional time to build the, the request as well, and that's in the staff report on the second page, I believe. Anything else now?
So if the new building is not built, I mean, I would assume that things are just status quo at that point. I mean, there's trucks and things and materials stockpiled outside, car, you know, trucks and things parked outside. That's just how it is, right? I mean, there's no, there's no city requirements for, I don't know, for limiting the number of vehicles that are parked at the side or, or how materials are stored, you know, on site.
Yeah, so those type of requirements are built up into the zoning district. So if they were in the appropriate district, those uses would be allowed. So again, that's a, you know, that, and there are use standards for outdoor storage in the industrial districts, which require fencing, solid fencing, six foot tall at least. And so that is part of why, you know, staff doesn't feel that this is compatible with the neighborhood. I mean, you're, you, granted, you have the use that's there now, but you're, you're adding 70% more storage to the area. Although the alternative way to look at it is you've got three buildings that are now being combined into one building. And so number of building wise, it, you know, and maybe a nicer new building, maybe that improves the, the site, but that's something that the board will have to make a decision on themselves. But from a, a technical standpoint, a staff standpoint, and from how court cases have been reviewed over time, it's a, considered an increase or expansion of a non-conforming use and therefore we're not able to make a recommendation for it in favor of that. Any other?
So the fence is not a requirement. The fence is not a requirement. They, they can, they can do all this without, without putting up the six to eight foot fence that everybody seems to have a problem with?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, so if, if they ever come forward with a fence in the future, they would need to meet their fencing requirements for residential districts. I've asked at this time and they're, they're not planning to put up something that is allowed in the residential district right now. And a staff would probably, should this thing be approved, we would want a condition that any potential future fences would have to be approved by you so that some of the neighbors' concerns are met at that time. But that's if or should you approve. That could be a potential condition.
Could you just repeat the issue of the cupola for me too? That's the design issue of non-conforming?
No, the cupolas are just a design feature that they've added compared to their first rivet, their first submittal. It's not required.
Okay.
But it, you know, I think their second submittal of the design of this building looks better than their first submittal. And that's why I pointed them out, but, but they, you know, so that they're, they're meeting five out of seven of the design requirements. And so again, the two that they're not meeting is the foundation and the, the overall size of the building.
And that's truly what makes it non-conforming?
No, what makes it non-conforming is it's in a residential district. So we've got an industrial use being conducted in a residential area. It's zoned residential and, and the subject property is zoned residential and all the adjoining properties are also zoned residential. Okay, I'm going to sit down and we will have the applicant come up then.
Is the applicant on the phone?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is, can you hear me clearly enough? My name is Jeff Hoyer. I represent Triton as of course a real estate broker. And I'll make it as quick as possible, under the weather right now with COVID. So I would like to make it very brief if possible. This, the history of this building is what is, makes it kind of unique. This was built back in 1934 as IDOT, Iowa Department of Transportation. They owned it all the way up till 1977 when Helen Hince bought it. That's Ryan and Associates, the contractor. And then in 1992, Hillibrant Construction bought it, again, using it as an industrial use. And then in 2015, Aaron Brown bought it, that is Triton. Just to kind of give you a background of the history of this, this has been here for many, many years. Those homes predominantly weren't, weren't even around at the time. But definitely for sure, a lot of the residents that are around there were there when this was already been a business or industrial usage, say, for the past 60 years, 70 years. Getting to the, right to the meat of it, this property sits on 1.2 acres of ground. As Scott mentioned in his, his introduction to this, it's roughly about 11,000 sub feet total of all the buildings currently there. We want to add another 2,800 feet to that, the net wise. So we're taking out 4,048 feet, asking to add 6,800 feet for the 2,800 net. So basically, when he says, as Scott was correct, it's a 70% increase in storage accessory, however, overall, it's only a 20% increase. We do meet five of the seven design and building requirements in an R-4C. The reason they'd like to do this is not to increase the intensity of the business or the traffic. It's basically for the storage of their equipment and their service vehicles inside versus half and half or over percentages outside and inside. It also eliminates the three buildings, as Scott mentioned, goes to two large buildings. I think it's a clean look. It's a better look. And the, what we have intended right now, the non-reflective metal that is on this building will be kind of a beige with a, with a dark brownish accent. That will also be put on to the other building that they had stripped down originally. We're going to put stucco on, but decided to wait and see if this building would be permitted by ZBA. Actually, in the past, as, as Scott mentioned, the Zoning Board of Adjustments have granted two hardship variances, one in 1977 and one in 1989, both increased the size of the operation. Hold on a second. There was some mention about the petitions that are there. I, unfortunately, I can't see everything that you guys see and whatnot. It is what it is, but the petitions for the most part were concerning the fencing. I would ask that you all deeply read those petition protests because the last one that I had that had multiple people sign, November 3rd, there's about two, four, six, eight, 10, 12. It looks like about 12 signatures, husband, wife, baby, or whatever. Anyway, it, it goes through talking about the fence, which we have, have knocked out of it. We withdrew that petition. But the last sentence, we, we in the following totally, are totally against the fence of any height. It would, and would like a finished look to the main building along with the new building within a time and manner. So that says to me, I don't believe that they're really protesting the building. It was all to do about the fence. We think that putting all the equipment inside and cleaning it up, we don't believe it's good. Devaluing the property having two cleaner buildings versus what they have now. Summary, this is a, a mother and daughter owned business that have been working to improve the business and property. But the bottom line is the property has been used as industrial use for all these years with two expansions. It has coexisted in this residential area. This expansion again will clean up the site. It will not decrease the value of their homes. The bottom line is what would you rather have, two nicer looking buildings or what you have now? That's really the, the bottom line of all of it. And we feel that, that it, it makes more sense to have it look like this. And we'd ask that you would please approve the building. Do you have any questions?
Aaron, if you have anything to add, you can also add something at this time.
I guess I don't really have anything to add. I think Jeff covered it pretty well. It's just, you know, these buildings are basically what he said, the existing buildings are old. And when you stated that the main office building has storage space to it, the storage space really is parking stalls. And then beyond that, there is an upstairs area, which is, we have to take water heaters, toilets, sound pumps, anything you can think of if we want to store anything of like value or I don't know how you want to label it, but if we want to store anything beyond what fits in those buildings out in the parking area, we have to take them either upstairs physically or there's a really old lift. And then we have to pull a truck out or a piece of equipment out to even access the lift or even access the stairs. So the storage up above is, it's just not, it's just not accessible. It's not feasible to use. It's, it's really difficult. So that's why we're looking to make this just easier to access and more or less safer to access, the more storage space beyond without in that parking lot. And, um, you know, the buildings that are out there, they're just old and they're crummy. And they don't even match. None of the colors match. And we would love to just make it look better. So I think that's, that's where we're at, is we just want to improve the look of the property itself. And then once the new building goes up, then we'll start adding in the landscaping. Because what was there previously was just a lot of like brush or pine trees that were kind of scraggly. I don't know. It was just very overgrown. So we'd like to add in landscaping that looks a lot better and appealing to the neighborhood. So I think that's all I'd have to add there.
So Angela Leibach, I have a question. One of the complaints from the applicant, or from the neighbors was the fact that the one building had been, had sat uncompleted for a long period of time. If the building was approved, is there some timeline when you expect the buildings to be completed?
The main building, um, was left undone because of COVID hitting. We had a stucco contractor wind up and then COVID hit. So then, you know, just everything happened. And then we paused it because we would like the buildings to match each other. With that being said, as long as we can get contractors lined up in a timely fashion, because we're on board and ready, um, and as long as they will, um, I don't know that you can pour a post for a more building after freezing temps. I don't know that answer. If we can, we will. Otherwise, construction would begin spring, as soon as temperatures agree.
May I get in this here real quickly? One thing else that was inaccurate about the comments about the three years was they were setting, um, actually, the contract was signed in, uh, for the siding, I'm talking about on the main building. The contract was signed August of 2019. The siding was removed September of 2019. They waited, uh, in October because the stucco installer couldn't get to it. It got to the point where it got too cold to put stucco on. Then, like Erin mentioned, next year comes up, COVID hits and everything is pushed along. So in essence, it's not, it's inaccurate to say it's been skinned off for three thirds.
Any other questions from the board?
Pardon? Is that the need?
No, for the board. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this request? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to the request? Applicant, do you have any final comments?
Um, I don't believe so. I just think it it just makes common sense to make this a better looking place. And I think you, it's gonna be a valued in the neighborhood. Otherwise, you're gonna end up what you have right now. And I don't think that's as good a look as it would be. Thank you very much.
Board discussion? I guess I'd ask for a motion to, yeah, sure I said this right. I'm asking for a motion to approve the, the denial, to approve the building?
So the motion would be a motion to approve HV 20-05 as proposed. And then, um, so if no vote would be, a vote for denial, a yes vote would be a yes vote for approval of the request as they proposed it. And it would include the items that they asked for. The, the, the design elements, the, uh, expansion and the, the time allowance.
Okay. I guess I'm asking for a motion then to approve the building?
It's a motion to approve HV 20-05.
Okay, motion to approve HV 20-05 as proposed.
I'll make a motion to approve HV 20-05.
Second.
Discussion now?
Yes.
Um, if we're going to move forward with the motion, is it not to be subject to the, uh, the fence stipulations that the company that we put up with?
Yeah, so in the staff report, I had some issues to think about should you, should the board wish to approve it. I can read you some conditions that I do have written if you think you want, want those. Because we do have, you know, four issues that we would kind of like to be addressed should this thing be approved.
Can I just read through those stats so everybody can hear them?
So should this be approved, staff would recommend the following four conditions, that the size of the new building shall not exceed the area of the demolished buildings, which cannot exceed 4,048 square feet. And then the second condition, any future fencing shall be limited to a solid privacy style fence, no more than six feet tall in either the side or rear yard. Chain link fence would be prohibited. And along the southeasterly side property line, the, the fence would have to be set back three feet from the property line, as that one neighbor there would have issues with opening his car door. So that would be the second condition staff would have. The third condition, completion of the existing office storage building shall be sided with a durably surfaced siding prior to the construction of the new storage building. And all metal siding, uh, existing on the office storage building shall be, yeah, metal siding on the existing storage building should be prohibited. But I think we should have something that's more traditional in character for commercial property rather than, or an office building rather than metal. The fourth condition would be, uh, the landscaping that they have approved would be required as well. And that's should the board approve it. We would, those are four conditions that we would like to see. Now, you can modify those if you want, or, or do, do as you will, but...
Yeah, I like all those, Scott. I, you know, this is board discussion time. I mean, I, I can certainly get on board and be sympathetic to the owner who is, you know, obviously trying to improve the property and, I think, in the neighborhood surrounding it. I mean, to get rid of some old obsolete buildings and to put something in there nice that's a little more efficient and looks nice and ties it with the existing building and some, some landscaping along the street. I think that's absolutely, uh, you know, a good thing for that neighborhood. Uh, I guess the other thing, I'm not really hung up on the, the foundation thing, you know, post frame type of construction is pretty common and that's, doesn't really bother me at all. I don't have a problem with that. But the scale of the building, I think, just to increase, to have a 2,800 square foot increase over what's there now, does seem to be quite large. I think it might, uh, look a little out of place in the neighborhood. So I, I kind of like all the conditions you just mentioned there. And the one I would say was, I'd be a lot more on board if we said, you know, limited to, you turn it on 4,000 square feet, you're limited to building back 4,000 square feet or some, some level close to that, rather than exceeding by almost 3,000 square feet. I think it's gonna really, really impact the, the character of the neighborhood of a, a whole building that size, although it is a nice looking building. So that's my, my take on it. I think it's, I think we're pretty close with those conditions.
So I can read that first condition again, just so people are clear. The size of the new buildings, or building, should not exceed the area of the demolished buildings, in which case, right now, they're proposing to demolish 4,048 square feet. So that means they, the new building would be approximately 60 by 68 instead of 66 by 104. So that's what Mr. Quinn just spoke about.
Scott, regarding the, uh, the condition of the fence, since it's a nonconforming use, if they wanted to do anything with the fence, wouldn't they have to come back anyhow?
The problem with the fence is that they could build the fence right up to the property line at six foot tall without a variance. And so that would cause some issue with the one neighbor. And I, and I'd like to kind of avoid that. But that's up to the board, whether they agree with me on that.
No, I do. I just, I, I thought it was almost required to come back since it's nonconforming use of the property.
Right. If they, if they do a fence that doesn't meet residential standards, then they would have to have a hardship variance for that fence. But, so right now, residential standards allow for a six foot fence up to the property line in all the yards except for the front yard.
Right. Thank you for the clarification.
Scott, I think there was, was there four conditions you mentioned? There was the size of the building, the future fence consideration, the siding on the existing building would match. And then it seemed like there was a fourth one.
Yeah, the fourth would be the, the fourth would be the proposed landscaping that they submitted with this last, most recent submittal, that that would be required.
Okay.
Okay, trying to do this.
And the completion for all this would be, is that at the end of 2021? Is that kind of part of the deal already?
Yeah, correct. I believe that's the correct date. Let me verify that, or Jeff can verify that. It's in there. In the staff report, it's also in their application.
The only reason we wanted that is because of the time, uh, we were, we're looking at two construction seasons in order to start. Uh, it's not gonna be the length of time to build, it's just when we could have built it. Now that we're to the point, we don't have construction of only one season, we should be able to, to, uh, do it next year. However, there, I, I do have some comments to these four issues or four conditions you're stating. I'd like to say that whenever it's appropriate to say.
Thank you for that clarification on the timeline. So you're proposing that you don't need that portion of the hardship variance, that you only would need a year to complete the work?
What I, what I'd prefer to do is to have the, the possibility of going 18 months instead of a year, just in case.
Okay.
The way things are going, I have no idea what's gonna happen with this COVID. Since now I'm directly involved, it's really a, a problem.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, 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 uh... They'll, they'll make a motion, uh, we'll, we'll do a fifth condition, um, and that it be 18 months instead of any other timeframe.
That would be five.
Okay, so I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve HV 20-05 with the staff, the five conditions.
So make a motion to amend.
Okay. I want to make a motion to amend the first motion?
Yes, with the five conditions.
With the five conditions.
Uh, can I interject here, or is this not a good time for it? Because there's...
I can, I can do a point of... Jeff, this is Scott Copes. I can clarify, just a point of order is that, so, once you have your second chance to comment, that's the only point, point in which you have to comment. Then it goes to board discussion only. And so at this point, you're, you're, you're not able to comment anymore on what, what is being proposed by the board for conditions.
All right, so if, all right.
So do I have a motion to amend?
I'll, I'll motion to.
I can move.
Darlin and Cochran, first and second, I, as I, as I heard.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Do, do the roll call now?
Um, so let's, I'll, I'll state what the amendment is for.
Thank you.
So there's been a motion to approve and now amendment, and that amendment is to approve it, subject to the following conditions, that the size of the new building shall not exceed the area of the demolished buildings. That any future fencing shall be limited to a solid privacy fence style, no more than six feet tall in the side or rear yards, chain link prohibited, and the southeasterly side property line shall not have a three, shall have a three foot setback. Third condition, um, I guess you guys talked about it both different ways, but, um, that the siding would match is how I heard Mr. Quinn state it. And, um, and number four, that the proposed landscape submitted with this most recent submittal be required. And the fifth condition is that the applicant would have an additional six months, meaning 18 months total from the time of this approval to finish, or start construction. Yep.
Did the siding one, if I recall, when you first read it, said about siding the, the existing building before the construction of the new building?
Right, yeah. So, correct. The siding, the siding would also include siding it prior to doing the new building.
Thank you.
I think the change that Mr. Quinn stated was that, um, he wanted matching siding. And in my condition, I said I didn't want metal siding, but let's go with what Quinn has stated.
Oh, no.
Do matching siding.
Scott, that, that doesn't matter. I just, I just wanted, I guess, making the point that, uh, I want the siding to be completed on the existing building. If it doesn't match the new building, that's not a deal breaker for me. It just, it just needs to, I like the way you stated it in your original condition. So if there's something to change on my...
So I'll, I'll repeat the third condition. Completion of the existing office storage building shall be sided with durably surfaced siding prior to the construction of the new storage building. The certificate of occupancy shall be withheld if necessary, and metal siding on the existing office storage building shall be prohibited.
That's fine to say, yep.
So is everybody comfortable with the five conditions as we've read them here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then we're ready for a, a roll call vote on the amendment? And I will start with Cochran?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Darlin?
Yes.
And Leibach?
Yes. So the motion passed?
Yeah, so the amended motion carries now. We need the roll call on the, um, primary motion, and we can have discussion on that if the board so chooses.
Um, would be that, Scott? What are, what are we voting on this one?
So the amendment is now approved. So should this main motion be approved, which is for approval, those are the conditions. But you do have a chance to discuss whether or not you want to approve the request one last time before you, before we do roll call vote.
So we just approved the amendments. Now we need to actually approve the amended...
Right, right. The next roll call will, will be for approval of what the amendments are, of the official request.
Do I need a...
If there's no discussion, I can take roll call vote. Does, is any discussion needed?
No.
Call vote? Quinn?
I guess.
Darlin?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
And Leibach?
Yes.
Okay, so the second, or the main motion carries. It's approved, subject to those five conditions. And we'll, we'll write those up and have those for the petitioner tomorrow. Well, we've got it written up. We'll, we'll, we'll show them to, we'll submit them to them as... as, as stated here.
Okay, we're ready for the next case then? All right, request HV twenty dash eleven of Joseph,
Eric.
Ricky? At fifty-nine thirty West Kimberly Road for hardship variance to exceed the allowed detached garage size by eight hundred and thirty-four square feet with a forty-foot by forty-foot sixteen-hundred square foot garage. The property is zoned, is zoned R1, single-family residential district. Table one seven dash zero nine dash one allows this property to have seven hu- seven hundred and sixty-six square feet detached garage, which is equal to fifty percent of the living space. The property has a dwelling of one thousand five hundred thirty-three square feet, second ward.
Scott Copes, Department of Development and Neighborhood Services, speaking with the staff report. Next slide, please. So, this site, uh, this area, if we jump ahead maybe two slides, I think. Yeah, so this slide here. So, this area was developed, uh, proximately in the nineteen forties, maybe some bit earlier for some of the properties, but most of it was all developed by the time or prior to its annexation into the city. This property was annexed, if I remember, fifty-six, I believe. Verify that. Nineteen fifty-eight, I'm sorry. So, property is annexed in nineteen fifty-eight. So, most of these buildings are built prior to having any city zoning code requirements on them, and so a lot of them don't necessarily meet our requirements. The proposed garage, if we go back one slide, so the proposed garage is for an area that does not exceed the footprint of the house. And under our old previous zoning code that we had in twenty nine, prior to twenty nineteen, uh, that quest would have been approved, or it wouldn't have needed a hardship variance. Because back then, on R1 lots, as long as you didn't exceed the footprint of the dwelling, you would, you would, we would consider it accessory, and so therefore, it didn't have a, a specific size limitation other than it needed to be ancillary to the, or subordinate to the primary use. So, we, we didn't ever want them to exceed the footprint of that dwelling because then it's hard to say the property is used for a dwelling. And so, as they proposed it here today, it would have been approved without needing a variance, uh, prior to twenty nineteen. So, we're here today because of the variance that we have, uh, the code that we have now, which requires it to be fifty percent of the living area. Or, uh, if their house is not large enough, then it would be at a minimum of seven hundred and, and twenty square feet. Well, I guess, I'm sorry, seven hundred and sixty-six is, is fifty percent of the dwelling right now. So, when we look at, uh, the next, let's, I guess, right back to where we were. So, this slide here on the bottom, uh, it shows the house. The high, Kimberly's two, the way on the far left, then it shows the house. And then about thirty feet from that, further north of that is the garage. Next slide, please. Uh, and we've seen this, this again as the area. It's zoned agricultural around there and R1, which is larger, our largest lot development. Next slide. So, we talked about this. It's zoned R1. It's low density. Annexed in fifty-eight, purchased in two thousand one. So, at the time the property was purchased, they would have thought that the proposed garage would have been allowed when they made their purchasing decision. Um, and again, so twenty nineteen, we have this new code. And I mentioned the ancillary use before, it would have been allowed. So, next slide, please. Um, so this is the design of the garage. So, the, this photo on the far right there, that's, that's what you would look at if you're driving into the garage. You'd be driving north into that, that's a southern elevation there. And the picture on the left is the left elevation or the westerly elevation of the proposed structure. Next slide. And, uh, this on the left now is the rear of the structure, which would be facing north, which really would be readily seen from any adjacent property. Uh, and then on the right, we have the three garage doors which face south. And again, it shows the garage door facing north. So, staff doesn't, or the code doesn't regulate by how many garage doors you have. It just regulates it by the area, the footprint of the, of the accessory structure. Next slide. Uh, we did notice out to property owners within two hundred feet. We have not received any comments back either by phone call or email or written. Uh, next slide. And so, in our findings, so there, there may be a hardship here as far as the code is concerned. I mean, when they, if, if they did their due diligence when they purchased the property in two thousand one, they would have been, received an answer that yes, this proposed garage of this size would have been allowed. So, the, that number one item, it may be met. The courts over time have been fairly strict on that, so maybe not, but staff felt that it might be met. Item number two, the physical topography of the site. It doesn't really limit where this garage is going to be or could be. They could put it in other places on this, this, the site and make it, make it compatible or comparable or allowed with the code. Um, they can do it exactly where they're proposing it at a smaller size. So, the topography doesn't limit, um, where they place it or the size that they're proposing. Uh, so that has not been met. Number, item number three, unique circumstance. That might have, uh, that appears to have, well, I guess I got that wrong. I haven't said not, but, it is somewhat of a unique circumstance, again, granting, going back to the fact that everything out there is built prior to the existing code. So, it's again questionable whether that one is or isn't met. Item number four, protection of essential character. Uh, staff feels that it has been met because once, if this would be built, it wouldn't be any different than the size of the other garages out there. And so, overall, staff technically can't recommend approval. But it is a very, you know, if you've seen the, the design photos that we looked at, it is a very well-designed garage. It, it more than meets our design standards for this location or in our most restrictive area, which would be the R4C. It would meet those requirements as well, so it is a well-designed garage. Any questions for staff? Uh, hearing none, then we'll have the applicant come forward.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Eric. This is my wife Liz Eric. I guess I would just like to say, as far as the topography, both our lot and the lot to the west are the only non-flat lots, uh, in our area. So, I do believe that it does, um, I do believe it does designate where we can put a garage. I would also like to add that, um, when we started this project, we checked out the septic tank to make sure we weren't crushing our field or anything. We knew that, uh, Wolf checked it out. It, uh, it did not, he's, he didn't go any further because, uh, he could tell it was not, uh, a proper kind of system, definitely not up to code. So, we put on the brakes. Um, we've already been approved for this garage. Uh, but we, uh, came, uh, back with twelve thousand dollars of our own money to put in this new septic system that just got done, uh, that is up to code and out of the way of the, the proposed location. And last but not least, Liz and I bought this place. We lived in a, uh, that's probably not, uh, allowed by the code, but we lived in a, a camper while we finished it up for a couple of months. We could retire here. We definitely don't want to leave the city of Davenport. If we cannot get the garage, I mean, it would force us to find a place that we could, uh, to, to do this, and we don't want to do that. We like it here. If we could retire here, we would, this is the last piece of the puzzle. So, I, I, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Uh, does anybody in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? I don't see anyone. Does anyone in the audience want to speak opposed of the request? Any final comments from the applicant?
No, thank you.
Board discussion? So, hang on, let me make sure I see this. Okay, so, I'm asking for a motion to approve HV twenty dash eleven.
I, I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further board discussion?
Uh, roll call will be taken now. Darlington, or Darling? Darlin, sorry.
If you meet me, I'll say yes.
Darlin, thank you. Cochran? Cochran, are you there yet? Okay, I, yeah, I don't kind of tell, with the chat, maybe the chat teacher? Yeah, can you unmute your speaker, Cochran? Or your mic, I mean?
I'm so sorry. Yes.
Thank you. And, uh, Quinn?
Yes.
Yep. And, um, Lebock?
Yes.
So, that's four. Uh, the motion carries and the request is approved as proposed.
Thank you very much.
Staff will notify the building department, so you could contact them tomorrow to proceed if, if you have everything needed for your building permit.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
So, with no other business, I ask, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Okay, adjourned. Are all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone, for participating online, and we appreciate your patience through, uh, working through these new technologies we're using.